Tuesday, September 5th, 6:00 P. M. We are pleased to have you join us here tonight in person and online for tonight's city council meeting. This evening Pastor Sidney Davis is going to lead us in an invocation and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Congressman, uh, Count Councilman Gatchell. Thank you. Stand up please Congressman.
Join me as we pray together. Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for this time that we're able to gather as the city council meets and as the mayor presides over the meeting tonight. We ask that your grace be upon us. We're thankful that you have given those who are in leadership and we know that we are to pray for those in leadership. We pray for our country, we pray for our state, we pray for our county, we pray for our city, and we're thankful for the fact that you are constantly watching over us and we pray that everything that is done might be done in accordance to your good pleasure and may we rejoice in the fact that you have provided us a Savior in Jesus Christ and we pray that in his name as we go forth from this day that we can always glory in him. In his name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Please open the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir Mayor Willis, I would like to make two amendments to the executive session. The first item is expansion of business or industry and the next item is potential litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman. Anyone else have any amendments to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sumo.
Second. Have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have a public comments section. We're pleased to provide an opportunity at each meeting for comments by citizens, limited three minutes of speaking time per speaker and no more than a total of thirty minutes. The public comments section is not a question and answer session. The mayor, council, and administration officials may take all comments under advisement and respond or take other potential action at a later time if warranted. Mr. Silverman, has anyone signed up to speak at tonight's meeting?
No one has signed up.
Thank you. Next, we have several items presented by our comptroller, Charlene Kirkow. Ms. Kirkow?
Actually, I'll, I'll take some of these items on.
Go ahead.
The first item is going to be the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget. Before we go into the public hearing, we will just provide a brief overview of the discussions that we've had regarding the fiscal year budget for this upcoming year. First, we would like to thank the comptroller for all her work, the department heads that worked together to set up this budget, and last but not least, our accounting department that spent a lot of time working with Charlene throughout this process. Some of the key principles that have always guided our budget and continue to guide our budget for this upcoming fiscal year, placing a major emphasis on quality municipal services, public safety, and making major investments in our infrastructure. Some of the key highlights for this upcoming year budget, first off, we do have a balanced budget. In addition, in terms of personnel services, we are providing a three percent COLA along with longevity pay, that's being proposed. The millage rate will remain the same, similar to last year at fifty-four point five zero, and there is a significant reduction of debt service expenditures. Attached is a breakdown of the revenue expenditures report. Key points I want to point out in terms of taxes for this upcoming fiscal year, our millage will decrease by two point seven three mills. This is a combination of the city, the county, and the school. The city's at fifty-four point five zero, the county's at fifty point thirty-seven mills, and the school's at forty-seven point seven zero mills. An important thing to note is that from 2018 to this fiscal year, the mill has decreased by seven point seven three mills, and that's thanks to the county, the school, and the cities working together. There has been a substantive growth in the use tax, both special sales and general sales has pretty much remained the same. Slide seven and slide eight are going to highlight all the infrastructure projects that we have going on. I think it's important to note that the city has done an excellent job leveraging its funding sources through the American Rescue Plan Acts, through Go Mesa, through Tidlins, through working with the county, and also our online sales tax, which is also called our Modern Use Fund, that has helped support the ten and a half million dollar capital improvement bond project that we've currently been working on, which is addressing five to six major drainage improvement projects in our community. As you can see, these are the four projects that we currently have under construction. And for this upcoming fiscal year, you can see we have a wide variety of projects taking place, ranging from recreation as it pertains to the Point Park fishing pier expansion to numerous drainage improvement projects, sewer rehab projects, and water improvement Some of the highlights for this year as it pertains to transfers, the special tax fund is going to continue paying for the sports complex light lease, which is two hundred sixty thousand dollars a year. In addition, eight hundred and four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars is going to go to debt service for rec bond payments, and point seven five mills will go from library ad valorem collections to use in repairs and maintenance of the library facility. We're going to have one point four five million in the general fund transfer capital projects and we'll have three million dollars in the Pasco Gula Utilities Fund transfer for capital The last slide addresses the current personnel setup for the organization. We are proposing this budget for two new positions. One will be coming in the Parks and Recreation Department, the other will be coming in the Planning and Building Department. And I think it's important to note that in 2017, we had two hundred and forty-two full-time employees. Currently, as of this fiscal year, we have one hundred and eighty employees. So services have maintained a great position and our employees are continuing to do a great job, even with a significant reduction compared to 2017. So I think that's something our organization should be quite proud of. And is there any questions? I'm happy to take them from council.
So anyone on the council have a question concerning the budget? Just for the public's information, we've had the budget for over a month and we've had two budget workshops and are quite familiar with everything on the budget and asked questions and have worked through it to get it to this point that we are tonight. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here tonight with the intention of speaking, commenting, or asking questions about the budget? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lori Massey from Crime Stoppers.
Good evening.
How y'all doing? I run the Crime Stoppers for Mississippi Coast. We have the most active crime stopper program in our state. I also serve on the advisory board for our state. We run our seven county program with sixty thousand dollars a year, that's it. We do pretty well with that, but we are asking for all municipalities to, to help us out. We're asking for three thousand dollars in your budget this year. We've never asked for money and I'll tell you how we get our funding. Say Terry Scott over there writes a moving violation for someone. After that ticket is paid, two dollars of that ticket goes back to the state and that is how we get our funding. So that is, the violator pays that. We are asking for municipalities to help us out. Any, any special projects that we need or that we, we want to do, we have to write grants for. Yesterday, there was a murder in Van Cleve that was on the loose and we will be paying someone for that. So Crime Stoppers works. This afternoon, I received a call from Harrison County Narcotics. I sent them a tip this morning, they've already gotten an arrest on that. So Crime Stoppers works. There is a boy missing right now in Green County. Green County, of course, is our most rural area. He has autism. He disappeared on August the fourth. So we've worked at as much as we can with social media, contacted all the media, and today we have gotten a printing company to print fifteen yard signs, kind of like a political sign with his information on, and we're putting those in Green County. That's what Crime Stoppers does for the community because we want that boy found. We have a kiosk in your Pasco Gula Walmart that was paid for by a corporation, I think it's Mississippi Power, that has people who are wanted and also community information. Could be health, the free health clinic is on there, the, in St. Martin, so that someone that is walking by there can, can see that and say, hey, I can call this number and get some free, free health. So Crime Stoppers does a lot for the community, but we have sixty thousand dollars to work for, to work with, and that's just not enough to run a successful program. So I'm here to ask for money.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate what Crime Stoppers does for the Coast and for Passgul in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing done, the public hearing on the city's fiscal year 2024 budget is now concluded. Next item, Mr. Silverman.
Yes, we are seeking to set the tax levy for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and this is going to have the city at fifty-four point five zero mills and have the school district at forty-seven point seven zero mills.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution setting the tax levy for fiscal year 23, 24?
Sumo.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or further discussion on that? We have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
The next item is approving adoption of tax assessment rolls for city and PGSD.
Do we have a motion to adopt an order adopting ad valorem assessment rolls for fiscal year 2024?
Sumo.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The last item for the budget on August fifteenth, 2023, we received from PGSD a request for ad valorem tax on behalf of the school district. This is just acknowledging the PGSD request and receipt of their materials.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging receipt of resolution in order requesting ad valorem tax on behalf of Pasgul Gulegoche School District?
Sumo.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have six public hearings for the Planning and Building Department. Mr. Church, the floor is yours.
Our first property up tonight is one two zero eight Commune Street. This little house here sits on Commune, it was built in nineteen forty-five. You see, it's kind, it's been abandoned, nobody's been in it for a couple of years. We did speak with the owner, owner's daughter, the owner's elderly and she lives with her daughter. They have no means to repair or do anything with this house.
Excuse me, excuse me, the owner is my mother and she passed away here.
Okay, I'm sorry, she passed away?
Yeah, and my brother and I were the only ones on the will, my brother passed away two months ago, so now I'm dealing with his daughter.
Okay.
Now has the succession of the house.
I got you, I got you.
Thank, thank you ma'am, we're going to give you an opportunity once Mr. Church finishes his presentation. Thank you.
The house is, is in a dilapidated state. I believe the house is above base flood, I do not have an elevation certificate to prove that, but if the elevation, the ground elevation there, I believe it is. And I'm glad you were here tonight. A gentleman came into office earlier, seen the house, I don't know if he's seen it here and went and looked at it. Young gentleman, just only been here six or eight months, he's looking for a house to repair. So there's someone interested in purchasing and fixing the house. So what we're asking for tonight is a resolution to clean the property if we can't get someone to either repair it by, with something with it. It, it's got some roof problems, severe roof problem. There's multiple areas of the house that's going to need some extensive work. It's typical nineteen forty-five home, but I believe that one could be repaired. I believe it's going to meet the elevation if somebody wants to fix it, but if not, we need to have a resolution where we can clean the property and remove the structure.
Yes, ma'am, if you would come and introduce yourself, tell us where you live, your name.
I am Jackie England and I, we, I reside in Gulegoche and my mother lived in that house until, well, she was ninety-six when she died, but she had been in and out of nursing homes and retirement homes and all that. So it was in pretty bad shape because she wasn't, it was empty for a good while. We were keeping it up long as she was alive and then day after for a while, but we were waiting on Medicaid and was to take possession of the house. They won't tell me if they have a, a lien on it or what, but they did the other day write me a letter and told me they wanted a thirty-three thousand dollar check now. I said, that's not, you know, it's not been probated or anything. That's why I haven't done a whole lot with it, but I did talk to some people and get some idea about what it'd take to fix it. And a guy yesterday that lives on the other side in Joe Cole's old house, I can't remember his, he told me he would charge ten thousand dollars just to do the roof and he said it had to be replaced. So there's no telling how much it's going to be, so I really don't know yet, but I've tried to enlist the help of my grandsons and they're all in school and working and so that's why it's gotten that far, but I would like to know what they're going to do if they do decide this little house out back that the roof is going to be, one of those, sorry, storms that came through. And I was wondering what they do when they do that, where they put the charges, is that attached to the tax of the house or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So how long do we have to?
That's what we're discussing tonight.
Okay.
If we do decide to declare a public menace and in need of cleaning and repair or demolition, then we will, we'll certainly talk about that.
Okay.
So your plans are not to keep the house or repair?
I don't have the plans, my niece has the plans, she wants to, she'd like to have the house, but I haven't probated it as well, I haven't probated, I just didn't think it was worth for me to just walk through it and look, it doesn't look as worth repairing. It cost me more than what it was worth, so that's why I'm sort of sitting on it, but I'm going to need to know when you find out what, you know.
Does anyone have any questions with Ms. England about the property?
Michael, what's our procedure on properties that are in probate or being inherited as far as, do we have any?
I mean, normally if there's an open estate, if the council adopts a resolution, we'll file a notice just to put everybody, the court case on notice, but as far as notice goes, as long as it's sent to where the tax bill goes, to the address unless it's abandoned or vacant, then the, those requirements are met.
I mean, I'm just looking at the house and driving by, it looks very repairable, so I would like us to do anything we can to prepare as opposed to demolish it.
And certainly we would, we would like for someone in the family to maintain ownership of that and be able to repair it. It's just not going to be on an unlimited timetable. If that's going to happen, it's going to have to happen within an agreeable period of time. And if we have, if you have an interested possible buyer, as Mr. Church said, who could do that, that might be a preferable approach for you to take, even if your niece has an interest.
Okay.
So what's the pleasure of the council tonight? Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution to acknowledge, I'm sorry, to declare twelve oh eight Commune a menace to public health, safety, and welfare and sets a penalty of twenty-five percent of the cost of the building?
Well, I think, you know, maybe not be a bad idea to do that, but give them time so that maybe whoever maybe purchased the house, it may help her out, but we got to do something with it.
You know, we need to hold it for thirty days for the contract or whatever to go through, we have no problem with that. I would rather save it and put it on the ground.
Sure.
If somebody's willing to do it, but we need, something needs to be.
But if something's not going to happen, it will have to be demolished.
Can the niece, can the niece get permits to start repairs while it's still in your name and is jacking?
Yeah, I mean, anybody pull permits to make the repairs, the gentleman was in the office today and asked about it and I gave your name, I didn't have a contact for you at the time, but if you give me your contact, I can get that to you, but he's interested.
So the thought is to have significant movement on doing something with the house?
And I explained that to him also.
Within thirty days.
Right, if you bought it, then you just transferred to and you have to get on it and use the perfect time of that.
So do we have a motion, Karen? Motion to second.
Sumo, with the thirty days?
Second.
With the thirty days? Any other discussion, any, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. England.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Church will be your contact for moving forward with this if it looks like you're going to be able to get some progress on that, that building. And we don't want to tear the building down. The feeling is we'd like to see someone repair it and live there, it's a great neighborhood. Next item, Mr. Church.
Our next item is eighteen oh three Harrison. I wasn't here last week, I would like to remove this from the hearing. This is being taken care of, it just didn't make it to my hands in time for me to pull it.
Okay.
We're going, we're going to skip that one tonight. The next one is thirty-four oh one O Mobile. This property has been for slum clearance hearings. This has been a problem for quite some time with the shape of this building. Mr. Santos owns this, this building here, he had a car lot and auto repair. Since we have talked to him, he's went ahead and moved forward after we've asked him not to do it, but he is painted building, built structure around the top, done some stuff to the outside, the rest of the building, interior is in pretty bad shape. So this is what it looks like today. I don't, I don't have the before pictures on here. Yeah, there's, from what I'm understanding now, he's, he's wanting to sell the building and get out of it. Our problem with that is this building, even though he painted it and put trim around the top, it's a block building for the most part, but it's in severe dilapidated state interior wise. There's no ceilings left in it, electrical's horrible, you know, putting paint on something is just masking the problems, so.
So is it occupied right now?
Uh, right now, yeah. He, he still has a car lot there. This building has been an ongoing issue for a few years now. Bodywork being done, the shed in the back, he did remove this little metal shed in the rear. I did get a phone call of someone who's, he was interested in selling it. I think the property's probably worth more without the building on it. This, this structure needs to go.
Very good. Is there anyone present tonight to speak for or against this property? Yes, sir.
I'm an interpreter for the owners of the building.
Very good, come on up.
I can speak for you, or you can speak first.
Good evening, introduce yourself.
I am, my name's Eric Davis, local real estate broker, partially in part to Mr. Parker, selling me my office over on AO three Lavo next to police department. So my brokerage was employed by Mr. Santos to sell the property. During my due diligence is when I discovered that the city had put a list pendants on. So we did sign a listing agreement, but I told Mr. Santos that I would not move forward with putting the property on the market active until we had the list pendants removed. So I'm here after looking at what was requested by the city and observing the property myself. I do have, I have my listing agreement if you want to see it, and I do have some current pictures that we had taken, both of the interior and exterior of the building.
Are you disputing what Mr. Church has suggested about the building?
I'm just, I'm just saying that I think there's been some movement in a positive direction to get the building in a sellable condition, which is what I'm concerned with. I don't want to put a property on the market that I can't sell. So he has, as Mr. Church stated, that the, the ceiling was out, that's been resolved. The exterior of the building, the trim, the, the office area, if you, if you allow me to present the pictures, y'all can pass them around and look at them, I think that would give you some, some context.
If you'll short on Matty and we'll just catch him this way.
After they pass around, can she have those pictures?
I don't, I'm not here to dispute anybody. What I'm here for is to, if there's, if there is a detailed list of what needs to be done to the building to get it to a state that the city is happy with, give us some time to get that done. I realize from looking at all the documentation that Mr. Santos has, this has been an ongoing issue. I was not involved then, I'm involved now, and I want to be able to sell it, so it has to be in a sellable condition as well. So we're just asking for a little bit more time.
So Mr. Church, is there a, a, a listing of the code enforcement problems that the repair that needs to be made?
There has been, list back and forth with him for a few years. You know, the issue with what he's done to the building inside and out, nothing to permit. We told him not to stop, has continued moving forward, I told him stop, I put stop work order, nothing's happened.
Does Mr. Santos not understand that he has to have a building permit for anything?
I do have some permits that were approved by the city. I do have some permits that were approved by the city.
Recently? Their current permits?
Yeah, one was demolition of the shed. I think the other one may have been paint or something. Uh, replace damaged area of siding with new siding. I believe that's what we see, uh, here. And I did take a little liberty to read the statute. I'm, I'm not an attorney or anything, but it did state in there that any exposed exterior wood that was not, or non-exterior wood should be covered either by paint or some type of trim. And according to what I see here dated 7/31/23, I believe he abided by. I could be wrong. The next, uh, is a demo shed fees are waived due to code enforcement, signed the same day, 7/31/23. That shed is gone. Those are the only two things that I've seen specifically that, that, that was, uh, approved. But I haven't, also haven't seen a list of what else needs to be done. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Josh, how, how long have you been trying to get something done with this building?
I mean, this, we've been working on it, slum clearance for months and months, months. This goes back since he opened the thing. Illegal body shops doing this, junk cars piled up. There's been a constant rotation of code enforcement issues, uh, just constantly. Uh, and this is, this is where we've ended up here is still code enforcement issues. Told him to stop on these repairs, um, all the stuff built around the top. Anything he's done to the inside, it's not supposed to be done. Uh, we gave a permit to demo the shed in the back because tonight it was going to fall on somebody. You know, so I mean, it's more than just the building. It is the operation there. There has been parts of problems. But the building, I understand it's a block building. This front corner out here is metal that's been welded on, a sheet metal that they painted that was not supposed to be there. It was never permitted. That wasn't open carport that's been closed in with these makeshift doors. Plus the privacy fence put up, uh, there's a metal roofing fence that's put there. And it's, it's not registered. This is not what he's supposed to be doing.
Josh, um, is permitting allow body shop work here?
No.
Sell cars, use car lot?
You can sell cars and you can do repairs, smaller repairs of the cars that you sell. But if you go inside, it's a body shop. Paint guns, paint, uh, the smell of it and wrecked cars in front all around the building.
What portion of the building was he permitted to repair?
The, well, he came in to get the permit for painting. I tried to tell him it'll permit painting, it'll not permit. Uh, this is from the original, going back to the slum cleaners.
This was in 2023?
Yeah. But months goes by, we still haven't got anything. So we pulled the plug on it and started preparing for 2019.
So it looks to me like he has a privileged license for DND Auto Services Services and Sales, approved by the city.
So what's your interpretation of auto services? Are you saying that's a body shop?
I would think auto services would be anything that intel, working on auto vehicles. I'm not an attorney. I don't know. I just, I just wanted to highlight that, that that's what he was permitted for. Paint, I know for a fact, no. Already know that. But with all this being said, from my conversations with him, he's totally ready, willing and prepared to shut down operations and sell the property. So that's our quickest route to get where we want to go, save the city some money and get hopefully a different party in that location.
So what's the pleasure of the council this evening?
Mayor, before y'all vote, I didn't know if anyone else wanted to speak.
Is there anyone else who'd like to say anything about this, this property?
This is a letter I sent to the city, um, that, that, after they told me that I have 45 days to be able to do something to the building, and I sent this over in May about the property. When I bought the property, I tried to clarify what kind of business I was going to do with the property with the terms of me being able to fix vehicles, because that's my kind of, my kind of work. When I got the building, I had to fix entire roof because it was worth nothing. Then I got a permit, so I was able to build the office part. Uh, then I got a permit, so I was able to put it, try to put the fence around the building and also to kind of cover the building from the back. Um, here, here's one moment so I can recoup everything you said. Um, right after that, I was able to go back and try to renew my permit. Uh, when I still, um, had about 20 days, I came into the building trying to resolve the issue and renew the permit for my, for my business license. Um, and I still had at the, at the time 13 days before I had the end of the 45 days to fix everything in the property. And that's when you guys stopped me from working on it. And that's when I was able to finally get some word from you guys saying that I was, um, that I had to destroy the same building that was in the back and, um, I needed to paint some of the structure. Uh, when I went down to the city manager, I was trying to make sure I got the permit so I can work on the building. Um, they were able to tell me that they approved the permits, so I can do the work. Uh, but it was only a short meeting after that I had with only two people that the only thing they were able to tell me was that they were going to demolish my building. And I had no say so on it. Um, so, uh, because all the issues has been over a year and a half. Since I've done any work on any covers regarding any dance crashes or anything that I had to fix on, I've been working outside, including working all the way into Tennessee. And that's when I got the notice that on the seventh day that I had to talk to some people about demolishing my building. And that's when I was able to, um, get, try to get the permit so I can try to work on it.
Mr. Santos, we, we appreciate you coming and speaking on your behalf tonight. I know it's a difficult communication situation.
Cause I really just want some help to try to finish, um, time to get rid of the vehicles I still have on the property. So I can figure out what to do.
We understand. We are here tonight not to tear your building down or demolish your building. We would like to work with you and have you take care of the necessary repairs according to the code of the city and the level of repairs that need to be done. So we're going to make a decision tonight as to whether to declare it a, uh, menace to public health, safety and welfare. And then we will give you some time to get those repairs made. And Mr. Church will get a list of those repairs that, that you would have to do to get to that point. If it is beyond what is allowed by the city to do that, it may not be repairable. And I think that's the, the problem to this point. Some buildings are in such bad shape, they can't be repaired. This may be one of them. But we would, we don't want to tear your building down unless there's no other option. But we can't allow the problems existing that are existing right there.
I do not want to be accused of anything that I haven't done. I'm not painting vehicles or doing anything on our license too.
Yeah, uh, no, no one's accusing, you know, this is.
Ever since I got my permit, I had a permit approved for me to be able to do body work, not paint on any vehicles. Um, I haven't been able to fulfill, um, anything done with my business. I was forced to work outside from Florida to Tennessee to different other states for me to be able to sustain my family. And I just, this is what he wanted to tell you.
Thank you. I understand. So do we have a motion to declare 3401 O'Veille Highway a menace to public health, safety and welfare? And assess a penalty of 25% to the cost of cleaning? Including possibly some time for Mr. Santos to, and, and Mr. Church to get together and get some definite plans made?
So Josh, the, uh, repairs that he's made, if they were permitted, would that substantially help the case or?
Yeah, I mean, right now we're going to be, we're going to get the building, make some repairs. Also what he's done inside, we'll come back to that.
So with the, has this resolution, you guys will be able to go inside and take a look and?
Yeah, I mean, this resolution, you can fix it.
Josh, have you been allowed to go inside the building? Has he, has he let you go in the building?
Yeah, we went in a couple times before, the fire department was in there. Why? They got a list, an arm long of fire violation. He was getting that list along with our list originally.
Josh, I don't, you know, I really opposed to him fixing the property back and getting it in a sellable place. But my concern is I'm looking at an aerial map from about two years ago. There's like 16 or 18 cars crammed around the building. And this is the kind of problems that we've had up and down O'Veille Highway. So we really need to, whatever he does here, not permit any additional businesses that will, this could happen.
If you sell the building, you can't put anything automotive back in it. Or is there any piece of kind of store retail, uh, something like that? It's more than likely, whoever buys it, probably geared down anyway.
Well, the problem is there's just so many of these type of properties up and down O'Veille. We're trying to get rid of and get cleaned again, but since, in my opinion, one in the right direction, if we can keep this from happening.
Well, the thing about it, you know, that they, it's a business to sell cars and what ended up being is a repair shop, which that's, that's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an accessory, making repairs of cars that you're selling. It's an accessory that's used, but doing body work, doing, doing engine swaps and all these cars piled around the back, they were buying auction cars. So that's where our car came from and it's not allowed.
But I don't know anybody that, that body works and doesn't do paintwork, so that's kind of.
So do we have a motion in a second to move forward?
So with, um, 30 days, is that acceptable amount of time? Okay, with 30 days?
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Who's our second? There was a second.
Well, we need to make sure that Josh has access to the inside of the building so we can see exactly what needs to be done.
Did you understand the question?
Yes, I, I understand.
Right, very good. Quickly.
30 days to what? To get a list or 30 days to get a list to get the repairs made?
To show significant progress toward having the repairs made, a plan and significant progress and permits.
So how long do we have to get the plan is the question?
I would say I'd be working on it tomorrow if it was my property.
That's what I'm saying. We don't have a plan unless Mr. Josh gives us the, the detailed list. That's, that's the.
We, we missed the list, so if you ain't, we'll get you.
Right.
I promised, I promised to all this.
And we'll be flexible with 30 days as long as we're seeing intent and progress being made. So. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Santos. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Next property, Mr. Church.
Next property, 705 Lafayette. Uh, this is another one that I need to pull. Um, the house is sold and being repaired, actually looking pretty good.
It is. I drove by there today. Very pleased. The next one.
The last one, 3606 14th Street. This is a little strip mall, uh, building, this kind of under the 14th Street overpass, just on the other side of the tracks and they'll crown in property. One side of this structure is being used, uh, for braids, braids, hair braids and all. The other side is empty, um, and in pretty bad shape. The whole building's in pretty bad shape, looking, looking pretty bad. We sent a letter to the owner. Right after he got the letter, he transferred the ownership to Ms. Jackson, who owns it now. But we sent a letter to her and here we are. You know, looking at the front of the building, it's hard to see the back without, you know, walking off through the ditch to get to it, but, um, it's got some roof, roof problems. All the windows being painted is, you can't paint your windows. You have to have, you know, some open glazing. Um, there's no natural light comes in this building whatsoever. Uh, it was a spa at one time.
Convenience store many years ago?
Convenience store and then it was a spa. I think 14 was, 13 or 14, we shut it down from that. You know, there's evidence that somebody's living in the building, which is fine. But we need to make sure that whoever lives in the building, it is. we need to make sure that whoever lives in the building, it is safe for them to live there. But there's repairs that need to be made, the windows need to be cleaned up, the thirty-six oh eight section of the building needs to be done, there's a lot of work to be done in this building. So, what we're asking is a resolution, uh, clean the property if the owner does not move forward in cleaning it up and making the necessary repairs.
So, have you given, uh, the owner a list of necessary repairs?
We have not yet. Uh, so, the owner was not who is here now. The owner, when we started this process, we never, we never heard from, and then we found that it was transferred to the, to a new owner, so we sent the letters over and noticed her to be here tonight.
It, so, is there anyone present to speak for or against this property? Yes, ma'am, come and introduce yourself and give us your home address.
Hello, um, my name is Corinne Washington. I am the new owner, and I am, I'm the business owner of H E S B Bycha, that is my business alone, that's where I do hair.
So, you own the building?
Yes.
Both, both sides of the building, you're only using one half?
Yes.
And you, are you living in that building?
We're not living in the building, but my business is doing hair and providing, I do like providing clothes for the, for the homeless. So, my customers sometimes will bring me clothes, and I, I put it in one of my room that's available. So, when the city came to my place, they never gave me any notice, they just barging, and on the way to barging, they assaulted me on the way, take picture without my consent, starting to telling, oh my God, this building is old, we're going to tear it down, and they mean all these things that I would not, I'm not aware of. I'm not sure what does that mean, so I was kind of confused the way they treated me, like I did something wrong. That building, but that building maybe used to be a spa, but I'm not a spa, I'm not Chinese, I am African, and I do hair, and I appreciate it, if the city can respect me when I come to my place of business, and service care on me.
I'm sorry you felt like you were assaulted or disrespected, that's not something that, that routinely happens in any investigation that the city and Code Enforcement is getting into, but that's not the question here tonight. Tell us what your plans are for that property and bringing it up to the code requirements for the city.
Okay, my building is, is a grandfathered in, so technically in thirty-six oh six, everything is up to code, there's no electrical, there's nothing wrong with it, uh, because I'm the only one that does hair. My lighting, I have that took like maybe one or two light bulb because it was too bright for me. I'm the only one that does hair, and as far as window that they want to be done, I have planned to get it done, but again, I'm just one person business, and I have to go with my budget and what is, you know, the main thing to do, and, but it will get, it will be done.
How long have you been in this building and, and your business?
I've been there, I've been in Pascagoula for like three and a half year, and I've been that building, I think, two years, maybe two and a half.
And where were you before you moved into that building?
I was in forty, forty-five oh nine on Denny Avenue, next to Seastreet.
Okay.
So, then when the owner, he say, like, he was like, oh, I need my, my space, I'm going to sell my whole building, so I'll look for a new location, and I find this one.
Does anyone have any questions of Miss Washington?
Josh, have you, have you been able to go inside the building and look at everything?
We've been inside the building. I mean, there, there is a code violation, smoke protectors missing, uh, because there are sleeping quarters in the building, there's some electrical issues.
By sleep, sleeping quarters, you mean a full bath and like a compartment?
There's, there's bed, uh, all in, on rooms, uh, somebody stays there, uh, but that is fine, you can have a lid work, you know, business, but it has to meet both commercial and residential codes or fire safety.
So, so has the fire department been allowed to go in?
I don't think the fire department's been yet.
Have they tried to go in?
I do not believe.
Before I open, oh, I'm sorry. Before I open it, that, the city came and take it, take a look, when they clean up and everything, they came back and take a look before they issued my permits. So, I honestly don't believe, I have a, I'm a civil engineer background, so I'm like, I don't see any code, is there any standard we can have to go by? I'll be happy to, to make those.
Did you buy that property?
Yes.
Or was it given to you?
No.
You purchased the property?
I purchased property.
How long have you been there now?
Uh, like, three, I'm two and a half year now, but I've been in Pascagoula now maybe three, four years. And I, I know I do want to fix the other side, and I want to open African restaurant, um, but it's, it's just me and I'm doing all that.
You realize, in any structure, commercial or residential, in the, the city limits of Pascagoula, there are certain standards that you have to meet, codes and that sort of thing. You mentioned that your, your building was grandfathered in for a lot of it. The city needs to do a full inspection with electrical plumbing, all of the codes, is that correct, Mr. Church?
Yes, sir.
And give you an idea of what it is that's going to have to be taken care of. And I understand you're alone and, and independent and a small business person, uh, but you can't have a business in a building that is not up to code. So, that determination has been made or will be made, that it's not up to code?
Yes, I mean, there, there is a code issue, a lot of, a lot of it is outside structural components, the empty side of these, I mean, back, had you a porch area, back here, the overhang, roof is messed up on that. The inside, I don't think there's a lot on the inside that she needs to be very concerned about, we need to make sure that it passes the inspection for someone to be sleeping there, because she's not in bed, and, and needs to be safe. But there's going to be quite, quite a lot of work that needs to be done between the empty side and the rest of the outside of the building.
So, do we have a motion to declare thirty-six oh six Fourteenth Street a menace to public health, safety, and welfare, and assess a penalty of twenty-five percent of the cost of cleaning, perhaps giving Miss Washington some time to, um, respond to any of the code violations that Mr. Church has found or will find, or the fire department? Did you have another question?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I would just like, like on the back of my building, there's a ditch, and that ditch is on the eastman, and the eastman is not my responsibility to clean it, so every time, when, when the grass is that tall and we have snake crawling into the business, I have a hard time meeting the department responsible for cleaning, and they take it a long time to get there because they say we're not priority. Uh, I'm not sure, you know, but they put all those on me, telling me I'm, I have some kind of code violation, I, I'm not, I can only do that much, but the ditch is not my responsibility, but it doesn't get cleaned as often as it should be.
And they were correct, Public Works does have a backlog of ditches and other items.
It actually belongs to CSX.
Oh, T, oh, you, good luck dealing with the CSX, that's the railroad, if that's their ditch.
Oh.
So.
I was not aware.
Yeah.
Josh, exterior wise, what all of this you need to do to get it?
Uh, there's, there's got some, there's some roof, roof damage, uh, broken panes, windows, uh, the back, same thing, uh, roof, patio damage, uh, fences, dilapidated on the back of the building, there were kind of cumps around the back. Building needs to be painted, the glass needs to be repaired and cleaned off where it's actually have a window. It's, most of it is, uh, zoning code violations as far as what they've done to the building, painting the windows, but the others are just decay, dilapidation, or lack of maintenance. It's, it's going to take some work to get the building looking good.
And are you prepared to do that work if necessary, if it is a violation of codes? Yes, ma'am. So, do we have a motion?
With thirty days, this could be standard to do, recently, go for thirty days.
I think that's a fair, okay. You make that motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Miss Washington, Mr. Church will be in touch with you, and you need to give him full access to your property, and don't be intimidated, no one's going to assault you or, or hurt you or harm you. We're there to make sure things are safe, and that's what this is all about. So, you'll have thirty days to work on it, to show some improvement, and, uh, we, we don't want to have to clean this property for you, but that's our next choice. You have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
It's thirty days is honestly not enough?
If you can show progress during that thirty days, we certainly will be lenient and flexible with you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? The motion passes. Next, the city manager's items, Mr. Silverman.
Yes, sir, Mayor Willis, we have, uh, three items underneath the city manager. The first one pertains to the approval of a quote from Gulf Breeze for nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to landscape an Akilia Cemetery. The primary focal points will be the entry areas. It's been many years since that portion of the cemetery has been landscaped, and we believe it's appropriate to proceed with this quote from Gulf Breeze. We did receive two other quotes, and Gulf Breeze was the lowest and best quote.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the quote from that people's cemetery landscaping project?
Second.
This motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Silverman, the next item.
The Ingalls Avenue Road Improvements Project is going to be coming for council tonight as item nine C for final payment to Neat Case Construction, but before we get to that item, we do need to address the closeout of the MDA grant. As you all know, the Ingalls Avenue Road Improvements Project was primarily funded through the Mississippi Development Authority, and as part of closing out this project, we need to approve the closeout of the grant package.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the MDA grant closeout package?
It's a move.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion or questions about closing out that package? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
In August twenty twenty, the council approved a contract with Neat Case Construction to perform road improvements on Ingalls Avenue. During the construction process, the city did experience significant delays with Neat Case Construction. The delays were so problematic that it led to Neat Case's bonding company being notified of their poor performance. In addition, Neat Case did not provide sufficient documentation on time extensions and contract benchmarks. Even with these issues, Overstream Associates, the project engineer is recommending approval of the closeout documents and the final payment to Neat Case Construction for three hundred four thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents. In order to get the MDA grant closed out and this project closed out, it is probably in the best interest of the city to move forward with final payment to get this project closed out.
Did they ever fix the issues with the camera?
Yes, they, they did provide the phase one cameraing of that area to make sure the utilities were in good condition.
And, and they are in good condition?
Yes, our city engineer and myself and Michael Moore did review the videos.
Very good. Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving construction final payment for Ingalls Avenue Project?
It's a move.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? So, this has been a very difficult situation for the city from day one, it seems, and, it's, it's good to be able to put it behind us. Is everyone comfortable with the fact that we have done all we could to ensure that that project move forward for the benefit of our taxpayer?
Probably as long, argue this as it was, it turned out really well, I think.
We've got a good, good streak. Any other discussion, any comments anybody would like to make? We have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? The motion passes. Next is the docket of claims, any questions about the docket of claims? Do we have a motion to approve a docket of claims?
It's a move.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion regarding the docket of claims? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have mayor council items, are there any mayor council items at this time? I would like to congratulate Councilman Fournette on a race for supervisor District Two well-run. I hate that it didn't turn out the way that we all wanted it to, but you did a good job and represented the city quite well throughout the process.
I appreciate that, thanks for supporting me.
Next is executive session, we have a motion to go into executive session to determine whether there is a need for executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, that concludes the public portion of our agenda for this evening.